Meeting of the Laramie Planning Commission for April twenty second is called to order. Clerk, please roll call.
Oh, yeah.
Madamore?
Here.
Heiser White is absent. O'Toole?
Here.
Prusilik?
Here.
Schneider is absent as well. Moody?
Here.
That is four present, two absent, and one vacant seat.
Okay, we have a quorum and we will conduct, conduct business. First order of business is approval of agenda. And so is.
So moved.
Is there anybody out there that accept the agenda as presented?
Yes, as presented.
As, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Donald. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none. Agenda is approved as presented. Do we have a motion to approve the, the minutes from the April eighth?
So moved.
Second.
Second from Tom. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the April eighth meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Nay, seeing none. Minutes are approved as presented. Okay, so the next is citizen, citizen comments on non-agenda related topics, no action will be taken. I want to explain a little bit. Right now, we're in the Laramie Planning Commission part of the meeting. And the only item on our agenda is a variance, which is where we shift hats and become the Board of Adjustment. So what we tell, any citizen comments right now will be not what we're talking about on the variance, which, the variance, which is dealing with an alleyway width, okay? So anything else you want to talk about, this is the time to talk about. And when we get into the variance thing, I'm going to hold every speaker accountable that we're talking about alley width, not the overall development. Does that make sense? Okay, so anybody that wants to make comments, please come to the podium one at a time, state your name and your address.
Oh, God.
Okay, so seeing, seeing no public comment on non-agenda related items, we will move on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So the fact which many members of the audience will not be aware of, that that variance has, the motion for the variance has been withdrawn.
No, no, we don't, we don't need to talk about that right now.
Got to speak.
I think it's, it's important that everyone understand that when we get into the Board of Adjustment part with the variance, that we're talking about the alleyway width, not necessarily the proposed development. Okay. So seeing no, you want to speak, sir?
Not clear as to what's, what was happening. Are you saying that if you want to speak about the development, we should speak with them now?
Correct.
Then I would like to.
Come on up and, and state your name and address. Does everybody understand what, what we're doing here? Okay. Okay, well, after this gentleman, we'll make sure we understand.
My name is Mark Stansberry. My name's Mark Stansberry and I'm happy to be with you today. I live at one sixty seven North Cedar Street, which is right around the corner and within the three hundred feet requirement to let us know something's happening. I, I, I have a few concerns about the development itself. If you gauge it, and I'm not sure that that's fair, but if you gauge it based on what they put up on Flint Street and on Cedar Street, the description last meeting was that the new ones are going to be quaint. I don't find those to be quaint. I find them to be boxy and not fitting in with the rest of the neighborhood. And I, when I drive by most days or walk by some days, I, I don't feel like it was a good fit. I think it was a forced fit. And I know that we're compelled to try to increase tax revenue. And we can do that by putting these, if we got a little bit of space, putting in something new. But I truly feel that maybe your guys' words or the developer's words quaint has to be a part of it. I think you really have to take into account what the neighborhood wants, not just what the zoning requirements are. If you look at the setbacks on those Cedar properties next to that little house, holy cow. It's like David and Goliath. And I can't imagine that not affecting privacy. Being on the north side, it doesn't affect their, their solar radiation. But the fact that people can look down into yards should be considered. I don't know what our setbacks are in our, in our particular town. But the recommendations for setbacks and for multi-story buildings are pretty high. When I went out and did a little bit of research on it. And if they're multi-story, they say setbacks should be moved back, greater setback as you go up in height. So folks like Mr. Sanchez, who are going to be right next to these things, could be very seriously impacted. I, I don't have a lot anymore. I, I enjoy the neighborhood. I walk my dog all the time around the neighborhood. And although it's not, I'm not going to be cast in the shadow of these new buildings. I do, I do really feel like we should protect the integrity of the west side. And for that, I hope you put that into consideration because I think we have a strong neighborhood. And I think it's a vocal neighborhood and we do speak our mind. And please, please consider that when you're making these. And I am glad that you postponed the motion so that some of you could go out and actually see the property and see what we're looking at. I've only lived here for the last thirty some years. People like Mr. Sanchez have grown up in the, in the neighborhood. So thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Stansberry. And just to remind folks, you know, we're shooting for like two or three minutes per person on a talk. Okay.
Is there a sign up sheet today?
Should be right here. So, so again, just if there was any, if there was any confusion, just talking about the development as this is the place to do it, not, not alley, alley width, which is the variance.
Right. I'm here because.
Your name, your name and.
Dixie May. And I live at six oh eight South Pine. And my family has lived on the west side since the eighteen seventies. Eleven of the houses over there belong to my family. I'm going to go ahead and read what I want to say, if that's okay. Many of the houses that were purchased on the west side, which is between the Laramie River and the railroad tracks, are because people wanted small houses and small lots. They came from Scandinavia and Prussia and numerous countries. And the houses they had there were small. And they chose the west side because that's what they wanted. And many of the houses that were built over there were built just exactly like what they had in Scandinavia and Prussia, which became Germany. A lot of people don't realize that Germany didn't become a country until eighteen, in the eighteen seventies. So the people that came over here came from the states like Prussia, Bavaria, and so on. Anyhow, in addition to the small sides of the homes and lots, which we want preserved because of the history of the site is awesome. We don't want them destroyed by construction that doesn't match what we already have. He mentioned those townhouses. And that is construction we don't want, believe me. Soldiers came to the west side in eighteen sixty-six. And it was followed by Carroll, Fee, and Hodgman, who had three homesteads over there. Originally, the west side was three homesteads. It has a very unique history, many different cultures. And the people that chose to live there chose it because of the size and the cost. It meant most of us, if we sold our house, couldn't afford a house over on the other side of town because they're so expensive. I'm, I'm promoting construction that meets with what we already have. I don't want to see what we have destroyed. I want to see it's a historic area. It's very historic. Already on Cedar Street, there's a house that doesn't get any sunshine in the winter because the house next to them was built on a lot. The house covers the whole lot. It's tall and the guy on the north side of him. But why, okay, the guy on the west, on north side of him doesn't get any sun. I feel the west side is endangered. I think we're endangered because we're a historic site. And it appears to me the city departments are ignoring what we as west side citizens and owners want to happen in our neighborhood. We want to preserve the past and the culture and not allow developers to ruin our historic properties. Because that's what's happening right now. I compare what's happening on the west side to what happened in Los Angeles. When those groups tore down the statue of Ulysses S. Grant, who was a veteran, a Civil War veteran and a president, a past president, they tore down his statue. And that's what's happening on the west side. Our west side is being torn down. And I consider it terrible. I can't sell you how terrible.
We're, we're, we're at time now.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I was told that.
Three minutes.
The other thing I want to say is the asphalting and the cement is going to cause flooding on the west side. I hope you guys are aware of that.
Thank you, Ms. May. Does anybody else, there's two people coming, hold on. You figure it out.
My name is Caitlin Hargrove and I live at three five eight West Clark Street. I actually just had a question about the development, if that's possible. At the last meeting, it was mentioned that that land, when it was sold, was five parcels of land, I believe. And then you mentioned that three townhomes are going, three duplexes are going in. I guess, why wouldn't that count as six properties if it's three duplexes? Or how is that possible?
Well, the, the staff, the staff will, will come up afterwards and they could, they could try to address that. Is that, is that right, Derek? And do you guys underst-
My name is Julie Frosto, F R A U S T O. I am a native and of Laramie. I was born here in nineteen thirty-nine. I was, yeah, I was, I was a city council lady in nineteen eighty-five. I served forty years. Okay, I love Laramie. I've seen it built. And I, I'm just going to keep it very short here. I am very upset with this, this. It says it's, it's a vision project, the West Side Vision Project. But yet it's not the vision of the West Side residents. It is a vision of a developer. That's what I see in this one. And it's like changing the way of the alley. I don't like that. It's slowly, slowly changing to a development area. I don't like that. I, I love Laramie and I've seen it also grow. I've been around with the railroad, the university, and all the good people. All I see now is that developers want to come in. I don't know who they are or what they are. I really am very upset with the development that went on. I can't remember the, I'm kind of, I can't get out. But there's four tall buildings. And so that to me, it's kind of like a money-making. It's not like it used to be where people would come in, like the Spiegelbergs. They were developers, but they were for the people and they became the, the developers for, for Laramie. So anyway, that's when I'm, I come to protest about this. Okay?
Thank you.
So anyway, that's it.
All right.
So I will continue protesting as long as I live. Okay?
Right on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you much. It's fascinating. Anybody else out there?
My name is Roy Sanchez. I live at the south end of that alley between Cedar and, and Pine. And I born and raised here back in nineteen forty-five. I was raised in a little house next door to, to what is now Bernie's. That's where I was born and raised, right there. Excuse me. Shut up. Ever seen Laramie change? And I don't like the way it's changing. We got people coming in from out of state, out of country, and they're telling us how they want us to live. Would you like that? Would you like to have somebody come along and tell you, you can't live this way? I feel like I did with my ancestors when they were here thirteen thousand years ago. The white man came in and moved them out. You're going to live on reservations. And that's where I feel they're growing us to now. We're not going to be moved out, we're going to stay there. But they're going to change everything around us. That is not right. I don't care what this guy might say. This Miller guy, he's here to make money and that's it. He's not going to be here for no other reason. And this Philip guy that's backing him up, I think he's under the table with him too. I think he's, he's no good. I wish we could fire them all. We got no say. We want to be left alone on that side of town. We don't want to be, nobody tells us what to do. We pay our taxes, we do it all. And we don't want to be told what to do. But there are, they're forcing this style on us and we don't like it. And that alley, I've almost been hit crossing from my house to house. I've almost been hit there several times because people coming down that alley, going to work at Big Horn Lumber. And they wouldn't go to the stoplight, nor they'd come down that alley. I don't know what the hell is going to happen there. I don't like what's happening. That area is in a flood zone and I see why the Spiegelbergs never built no homes there. I see why now. My brothers lived across the street on Cedar and they had stump bumps going all the time. All the time. When the river was up, I've seen it right up to the alley. But this guy wants to develop and pave it. I've seen the water clear up there. Our drainage system is no good. The pipes down there are full of gravel. They were trying to clean it last, last summer, three different times. And the guy told me, he says, they're not going to do anything about this because it's the west side. They don't want to touch it. They don't want to have nothing to do with it. And they're infringing on our rights when they start doing this stuff. Hey, we don't want to touch that west side. That's where the riffraff lives. They used to call us dirty Mexicans that live on the west side. Now, I'm not a Mexican, I'm a Native American Indian. My ancestors have been here for sixteen thousand years and I take, oh, go, don't you dare call me a Mexican because I don't like it. I'm not one. Me and my brothers fought for our country. All four of us went to war for our country. They're not here now, I'm the only one left. And my whole family, they're gone. But if they were alive today, they'd be right here with me. They'd be fighting this issue. Look, Pimlang Sinker, they'd do it. And I don't think that's right, what they're trying to do to us. It isn't right. I don't like it one bit. Those buildings are not going to be their like and who's going to, who's going to live in them buildings anyway? The riffraff that he's going to bring into town? And Mexicans coming across the border, where are they going to live? Right there next to me. What kind of law? And I've talked to cops, just dearly love the west side because nothing goes on. A nice quiet place. I love the west side, right? Well, so do I. I was born here. This is where I prepared to work on the west side. That's what they told me.
All right, Mr. Sanchez, well, we're out of time.
My time's up.
But thank you very much.
Next. I think we ought to have more of these meetings. So we can settle this issue once and for all, once and for all. It has to be settled.
Two, two meetings a month.
Can I ask you a question?
No, no, no. We're.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Hi, Chandler Hockup, Chandler Hockup, two six five North Cedar Street. Yeah, I did the math on all this and I get why you want to do it. The duplexes that have already been built around us are worth about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars more than our houses. I understand they'll make about one thousand two hundred dollars more a month or a year in taxes. I understand why this makes economic sense for you and for the out-of-state developer. But these homes are not affordable to young people. I don't want to see the city of Laramie make stopgap measures to meet their budget at the expense of young people. I think that if that's your formula for what you should develop and where, you need a different formula. It just doesn't work for young people. They're going to leave this place.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, anybody else out there?
My name's John Firestone. I have the two sixty West Fremont and I also own the house one sixty-four North Hodgman. We're within like hundred feet or hundred and fifty feet of that property. I, I bought that house that I live in about six years ago and it was basically a teardown. And we rebuilt it and kept it very original. And a lot of those houses are hundred-year-old houses. And I see one at a time, they're fixing up these houses and it's really becoming a cool, cool neighborhood and keeping them original. And what they're looking at building there is not going to be, it's not going to fit with what we have in the neighborhood. And the other concern I have is not, not only that it's not going to match what we've got there, but I'm concerned about parking. Spiegelberg was really responsible. They had that lot that we're looking at right now, that's going to be developed for lumber and for parking. And they also had the other lot that is not developed on that lot or on that block that they had for parking. So there wasn't really a parking issue. Generally, houses have about two cars per household. We're talking about six households, that's twelve vehicles. If they put in spots for parking, for driveways, as I, or as I saw in the plans, that's going to take up some more of the street parking that we have there. And those houses don't have, most of them don't have garages and they don't have driveways. So we are reliant on our street parking for where we park our vehicles. Gem City moved into that property and they didn't get those same lots that Spiegelberg had for their extra parking. Right now, they're parking at an average around ten vehicles per day in and around their property and at least one trailer. And that's where they have to park them is on the street. And so in fact, right now, if you look, they're parked in front of those vacant lots. And they're parked also partially in front of my house. The concern is that we have another, say, twelve vehicles plus guests, plus if they have any trailers, RVs. We're not protected by an HOA, so we can have those and the people that move in can have those as well. And we'll go from having enough parking to not having enough parking. And that's not just for us, but it's for the people that also move into those, into those houses. They're going to have trouble with parking as well. And so it just feels like I'm not against development. I know that we need more development here in town and I, and I'm actually glad that we get that. The question is why they wanted to put it here. This isn't, they should probably take the same thing. I know there's some property over off of Clark Street that's available and other places that aren't going to be impacted. But the neighborhood's kind of, because we have, because we have Bud's Bar there, we have JSI Grill and we have Gem City Roofing there. In addition, we're not just houses. This is directly across the street from that, that proposed property. And so we're looking at concerns about what we're going to do for parking. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old son. I really like to be able to park right in front of my house, to unload him and everything. And like I said, we don't have a driveway, we don't have a garage. And so if I have to park a block away, that's considerably more difficult. If you guys have had kids, you probably know how that is. And that's kind of a concern for me as far, as far as right now, Gem City is really polite. They don't, their people don't try not to park directly in front of my house so that I can park them. It's really nice. And it's just not going to be something that people can handle. And I just think, develop, that's great. Let's develop, just, let's try to put appropriate development for there. And just because we can, like you say, it's R2-zoned and maybe they can split it up into three townhouse units or whatever, which I'm not sure how we still get up to six units without a variance. And I say, please, let's not grant any variances on this just because, I mean, I've worked ones that live here. I've spent a considerable amount of time and effort and money in this neighborhood. And it's just, it's not the right development for that, you know? Please find another development.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Firestone, I appreciate it. Um, anybody else out there for comment?
Chair?
Yes.
I have someone on Zoom.
Okay.
So I'll allow them to speak.
Okay.
Gina, you can make public comment.
Hi Gina. So, so Gina, yet you need to unmute and about three, three, three minutes, please.
Gotcha. Okay, my name is Regina Chavez or Gina Chavez and I live at one five three West University Avenue. I also own property where my mother, who just spoke, her name is Julie Frosto. And she lives at three fifty-seven North Pine. So she'll be right down the street from this development. I have huge concerns about the size and type of the development. And so with the very, I know we're not talking about variance, but okay, with the development there, what will happen? I'm very concerned about the drainage. Right now, at, let's see, Lewis and Pine, the water collects there horribly. And it's, it creates a dangerous condition every year. And folks cannot cross that street safely, either whether they're walking or they're driving. So that is a concern. I know it's on the opposite end from where this property is, but I just share that with you, that that's a, a big concern that I have about what's going on with the drainage and what will happen with this particular property. Parking, of course, big concern. Right now, people with children are free to go through the neighborhood with their bicycles. Oftentimes, I see people with children and dogs in tow just walking in the street because they don't have any competition from traffic. One thing that I would like to see more of is if we're going to have development, responsible development. And I think that as people have mentioned that with the Spiegelbergs, that was responsible development. The homes are still standing today. And so I think that we certainly do have to have more discussion, more community input. And with that, I'll close my comments. I did have somebody else who cannot attend, who gave me this long email, which I don't think I can read in forty-seven seconds. So is there a way for me to submit that on his behalf?
Well, it, it'll be, you know, kind of late for, for this, for, for this situation. So I'd say.
You say what?
Well, you got, I'll give you, I'll give you a minute. Run through.
Oh, you give me a minute to read it?
Yeah, go.
Okay. Okay, 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 okay. I have been, okay, this is from Eric Henderson. It reads, I have been told by the city of Laramie Planning Department that a variance application has been withdrawn for paving fifteen feet alleyway of two sixty North Pine Street, Laramie, Wyoming by the developer. Still, after being called individually for a meeting between Philip G. and Joseph from Laramie's Planning Department this morning at nine AM, I want to be clear, I do not support Planning Division prejudices supporting developers versus existing property owners. Our planning department unduly influenced February and April twenty twenty-four community surveys by failing to present all options available for future or further development as is consistent with our neighborhood development since the eighteen hundreds. They guided the public comment, ignoring twenty twenty-one resident petitions for development consideration consistent with that occurring since eighteen hundreds. Further, I do not support this alleyway paving period. It is too simplistic to route drainage down the center of this alleyway alone. Any paved alleyway here needs to be directly routed into drain system without adding to surface water already overflowing corner drains of neighborhood. without adding to surface water already overflowing uh, corner drains of neighborhood. We have flooding here in summer and winter along Cedar Street and Fremont Streets that is not going to get better with this addition, this action. Uh, paving alleyways at two sixty North Pine Street will unsafely increase burdens on the aged drainage system of this neighborhood by increased watershed volume flowing to already limited drainage infrastructure. Paving the alleyway also will also permit two sixty North Pine Street, Laramie, Wyoming to overbuild these city lots by existing R-two zoning. Please do not support increased traffic to our uh, narrow sixteen-foot alley neighborhood area. Speeds will increase. Am I done?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
We got, we got, we got a little traffic, traffic in there. So that's duly noted.
Okay.
Anyways, uh, uh, thank you, Ms. Chavez. I appreciate your, your comments. Um, anybody else?
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to make public comment. I'm Anne Brand and I'm the Executive Director of the Albany County Conservancy, which is a five oh one C three in Albany County. I represent a hundred and ten members. And I'm not going to digress into the history of the West Side. I think Dixie May did a wonderful job doing that. But I want to make comment in regards to the fact that um, the notifications that I'm getting through text messaging on my phone when I went to Laramie City Government and requested that in regards to these types of meetings are not adequate. And I will address the fact that the Conservancy has been working with the Albany County Historic Preservation Board. And I just spoke with Mary Hopkins on that board and she's not getting emails that would indicate meetings of this nature. And there are some serious concerns in regards to development in this area because of some of the information that Dixie May was giving you. The Conservancy's mission is to preserve, protect and promote habitat, history and wildlife in Albany County. And we've been very active. We were involved in the conversations in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one with the Rail Thai Wind Project, which is more focused on the county. But we keep our eye out on what's happening inside the city as well. We have concerns about that part of the Laramie River and erosion and flooding that happened to occur in the springtimes in that area. And we are also very concerned about historic integrity of properties in that area that were developed in that eighteen sixty-seven, sixty-eight time period. And um, after that, that document, the Transcontinental Railroad, the railroad builders in the area. We're very focused on the Scandinavian Lutheran Church, which if you are not aware, that is the red and white church steeple that is in West Laramie. And that is on the Alliance for Historic Wyoming's Historic Properties list. And so we again want to emphasize that we would like to have as much transparency and public involvement as possible when these conversations take place. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Brand. Okay, anybody else out there? Come on up.
My name's Evan Degenoff. I live at six, ten South Pine. I just want to say thank you for hearing all our comments and you know, trying to help the city of Laramie. I think on a different note, you know, uh, we've talked to City Planning Commission and everybody and I know housing is a giant topic and I know they all have a job to do with you know, doing what city council wants them to, but I think in a bigger sense, you know, I, I think Laramie has some more fundamental issues to deal with than just housing, you know? There's a lot that's wrapped in the house, you know? Inflation's been forty percent in the last five years. I know my billing rate hasn't gone up forty percent. You know, the, the amount of college-age people in the US is going to keep going down. UW's not going to grow. We're in the lowest fertility rate in our nation's history. You know, the, the city needs money and will have to come up with money to sustain itself. But I, I really just, I want to press on people here to, to go walk around town and see how many empty houses there are. You know, how many rentals there are. For example, the house my wife and I bought um, was an out-of-state couple who owned and rented it for fifteen years, you know? And I understand you're allowed to own property and rent it. That's not against the law. But maybe there's some other ways to get people into housing without, you know, changing neighborhoods because like I said, there's a lot of empty lots in the city. You know, there's a lot of duplexes, there's a lot of rentals, et cetera, et cetera. And those are separate conversations on how you deal with that. But I think the city's going to have to deal with some you know, big problems in the future. Growth really isn't on the horizon. Unfortunately, a lot of the way things work with, with planning and, and debt and everything is it's, it's predicated on being able to grow out of it. And, you know, I, I, I don't see as bright of a future for that, I guess, as a lot of other people do. Last meeting, Mr. O'Toole said that for um, was it the flood or the irrigation problems with Laramie? We have a hundred and forty million dollar bill over thirty years of liability for that. You know, I look at my property taxes and, you know, I don't have kids. I understand kids need to go to school, but seventy percent of that is schools. You know, so I, I think in a general sense, we want things, I don't know how realistic a lot of them are. And I just, I really I guess plead with, with the people in charge to think of our neighborhoods, why we live certain places, why we choose to live certain places. You know, there's some economic realities we have to deal with. We understand that, you know, we may need to try to grow out of some problems, but we may, we may not be able to. So I just would like to say a couple of comments on that and we appreciate your work and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else out there um, that wants to step up to the podium? Nobody on Zoom, Ryan? Okay, so uh, we will close the citizen comments. Thank you very much, everybody, for, for uh, your, your comments. No, I, I think we're, I think. I'll give you thirty seconds, Mr. Sh. I don't, I don't know. Oh, okay, so. Yeah, yeah, right, right. Okay, very good. So the next item of business is uh, planning commission and staff reports and comments. Philip, you uh, and hopefully be able to address that, that, that uh,
Yeah.
that lady's comment, please.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the commission and uh, folks that have uh, spoke during the comment period. Just want to first make the announcement that the West Side Visioning Survey is still available. Many of the comments that we heard here at the podium tonight, you know, have already been reflected and, and, you know, given to us during many of our pu- public outreach sessions. But I uh, thoroughly encourage anyone in the audience as well as who, anybody on Zoom to get on our website that we have for the project, West Side Visioning Project, City of Laramie, it'll come right up. And um, there's a survey on there. And this project is, and this is an announcement, right? This is part of a, a, and a bigger announcement that uh, these comments are super valuable. Uh, currently, as has been stated many times, West Side is in the R-two zoning district, which allows for a level of density. I feel like uh, many of the, the folks that have made comment tonight are not comfortable with, like to see something else. The culmination of the West Side Visioning Project is a document that we can use to present to council and perhaps support some future effort that is brought forth by a citizen or a, a group from West Side wishing to change the zoning there, wishing to have an overlay district there that doesn't currently exist. But that is what this project is for, is capturing those responses, being able to use that at, at a, at a later time when a uh, when a text amendment or ordinance change or something like that is brought up. So that's number one. So everybody that spoke and signed up on the signup sheet, I'm glad if you put your email on there, I'm glad to send you a direct link to the survey. I'll make a point to do that. Anyone else wishing to have that, please sign up on the signup sheet and I will do that.
So, so, so Phil, what, what you're saying is it, is it the input from the, from the West Side visioning process? When that's finished, then, then you would be entertaining if, if, if the community wanted, having some kind of change in zoning or, or like you say, an overlay district or, or something that, that captures some of the, the comments that, that we've heard here tonight. That's, that's.
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Chair, I guess that Yeah, Mr. Chair, I guess that's another good announcement, educational piece is that any citizen at any time can bring up a uh, text amendment that could change uh, or a rezoning application that could accomplish what, what you just mentioned. Um, so that's always available. Now, in order to support something like this, I feel like having it in a, some type of plan, especially some type of survey effort as big as the one that we conducted in West Side would be beneficial. So I'm encouraging.
They would go, they would, they'd go with the, the single response.
I think the applicant would be able to use what, what has been gathered by staff and the two interns that are helping us on this project as a tool to move something like that forward through the process.
Do you have a sense of how long it would take to get that visioning information in there and, and then see if the community, the West Side community wanted to, to make some zoning, proposed zoning changes and and actually that, that happening? Do you, do you have a sense of how long that might take?
So the survey is still open and will be, I believe, for at least a few more weeks. Uh, we're planning to close the survey uh, window and, and our interns that are helping with this are uh, putting together uh, they, we've already reviewed a draft, but are putting together something in the final format that we'll be able to present to you all as well as city council to acknowledge this effort. Uh, that, you know, we're planning on looking at work sessions for city council in June and in, for this body probably next in May.
Okay, so that would be another opportunity to make comments. We, we, we have, we have meetings here every second and fourth Monday of, of each month. To sort of keep up, up to speed with what's coming out of uh, um, this effort.
Indeed.
Okay.
And so the second announcement I had, uh, well, more of an educational piece, um, getting to the uh, question that was brought up as far as the lot configuration. And currently, it's exactly right. It is five lots currently. In city code, we have provisions for what's called a minor land division as well as an administrative replat, which essentially get you to the same place. Uh, if you have a lot, you can divide it, make two lots if it meets minimum lot widths and so forth. And um, you know, divide your lot. Public improvements need to be in place and so forth. So that's essentially what's happening here in the administrative replat process. So there are five lots currently, but one is being added to make six. And I guess another point of, of clarity here is the, the maximum density on this lot isn't even being proposed. I mean, a calculation is fifteen thousand square feet. The maximum that a developer could put in at this point is twelve units, actually. Um, based on our um, dimensional standards for the R-two district.
Uh, no, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on, hold, hold on. We're, we're, okay. So, so twelve, uh, how many would be um, are these being proposed?
Uh, currently, six.
Six, okay, alright. Did, 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 did he address your, your, your question? No, no, hold on.
No, no, because that, that doesn't, um, as, as I understand R-two zone, that's not how, that's uh, and everything that I, that, that maximum I can see that he could do is uh, six, you know, or you could only do forty units, but without variance. Because you can only break them down to six thousand square feet where per, and there's only just over twelve thousand, so two that'd be split into, each R-two can have two units. So that's a total of, that's a total of uh, four units. Or if it's done as townhouses, they can be four thousand per, but uh, you have a hundred and twenty feet, have, have uh, forty feet of street which you took to do, but that will be three townhouses. So I'm trying to figure out how they're even getting to six, get along by sixteen. That doesn't make any sense, but I, because I've looked into this for my own, my own brush.
So, 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 so perhaps you can, you can stop by the, the planning department and, 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 and talk to Philip a, about that specifically because I think that.
So, yeah, but.
Okay.
Yeah, please come by. We can, we can run through that and I'll explain it. Yeah.
Okay, great.
Well, those are all the announcements.
Okay, thank you, Philip. Yeah, Derek.
Quick announcement. Uh, community cleanup has started. So each year, uh, the city of Laramie through our uh, code enforcement uh, division works on efforting major community cleanup, kind of as the snow melts and, you know, the trash is exposed. Uh, we seek volunteers and groups of people that go out and they clean up parts of our town. We do this in joint with the big event, which is held at the university. And uh, we usually receive about three hundred volunteers a year who work on specific areas in our community doing all sorts of cleanup activities. And so um, just an announcement that that has kicked off. It'll run through technically through May seventh. But obviously, if you want to volunteer your time after that or before it, we would love to have you.
So May seventh is, is the official day?
It's the end date officially, but uh, we, and it started today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's started now. And if you have questions or you want to get a group together to clean up certain areas, um, you can reach out to the city planning office. Or you can reach out directly to Ray or Ramon Sandoval at three oh seven, seven two one, five two eight five. And he can help coordinate your group or indicate places that are available for cleanup. So that's all.
Okay. Alrighty, uh, Donald.
Can I ask a question of Philip?
Sure.
Uh, Philip, can you tell us how many responses you've had so far on the survey? That's question number one. Question number two, what would you consider to be a meaningful response rate that will influence uh, you guys and this group and the city council? Do you have a target response rate in percentage?
Um, Mr. Chair, through you, yes. Um, I can't speak to the exact number of responses because it's been in several different forms. I think online we're looking at around a hundred. Again, I can follow up with you on the direct numbers. Uh, because we did uh, the online survey where we got about a hundred responses, I think just under a hundred. Um, we also had the in-person sessions as well, where we recorded all of the, all of what we heard there as well. And we also had a community hotline that again, the, the, the interns that are helping us with this capstone project, man those lines. So we, we're still kind of filtering through everything we've heard, but I'm glad to follow up with the exact numbers. But as far as the second point is, what do we target? Uh, unfortunately, in the planning realm, the bar is very low for responses to community surveys and uh, unsolicited surveys of any kind. A rule of thumb really that I've heard in the profession is if you can get ten percent response rate from a, from, from a population that you're trying to engage, that's extremely good. And I, I will say, out of the, I think it's four hundred thirty-two parcels in the study area of West Side, I would say that through the responses that we've gotten from the survey as well as the very well-attended, as many of these folks can attest to, that came to the public meetings. Um, I, I think we got a, a, a great response. But again, those numbers will be outlined in the final.
Right. And Philip, you may have said this.
What are those responses?
No, 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 no. Philip, uh, you may have said this, but when does the survey close?
I believe the survey runs until um, the beginning of May because we need to wrap this up. To get a final document together. Because our interns are going to be graduating soon. So I believe it's still open. I just checked. It's still open now, but I believe it's just one more week.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, very good. Those are the last of staff comments? Okay. Um, on to disclosures, expertise, communications, potential conflict of interest, commissioners, anything? Uh, Donald?
So I happened to be at a uh, social meeting in town and Wendy Chapman spoke to the group and spoke specifically about the issue with the West Side and I was in attendance. And I reminded uh, Ms. Chapman that And I reminded uh Ms. Chapman that uh Pine Street development at that time was likely to be up for discussion. And a vote, which was true at the time. And I shared with her a document prepared by uh. Assling and Avery based uh. Uh, and also shared with her the posted document about the response. Um, uh, based on the the conversations that took place in the twentieth of February. Uh, in the the West Side Visioning Study Page. I also spoke to Sharon Cumby by phone. To get some background and history uh about developments in the West Side, because that's not something I knew much about. And what the rules were about paving alleys, because again, that's not something I knew anything about.
Okay, well, I mean, given that I think when we get into the into the Board of Adjustment phase. We won't be making a decision, so I think everything's everything.
I see no problem.
I see no problem. Okay. Um, so uh. Current planning projects, old business, there's none, new business, there's none, uh, and no range, no long-range planning projects. So, um, uh, is there a motion to adjourn as the Laramie Planning Commission? Reconvene as the Board of Adjustment?
Still moved.
The times are second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of uh adjourning as Laramie Planning Commission and reconvening as Board of Adjustment, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? None? Okay, we are now um Board of Adjustment. And we have on the docket um variants. But to begin with, uh, I'd like to call out to everybody that. Anticipates commenting on the variance topic, which is alley width paving. Um, that um, if if. Do you uh, we tell truth, hold truths, and nothing but the truth? All those say. Yes, if you're gonna talk. This is a swearing in.
Witnesses have to be sworn in.
Be sworn in. Yes, yes? Okay, so whoever. Whoever comes to the to the podium in this in this process has sworn in per for that oath. Okay? All right, so the first order of business on uh variance. Dash twenty-four dash oh one, uh, two sixty Pine Street, Laramie Municipal Code fifteen dot eighteen dot. Zero one zero dot A dot fifteen uh. Alleyway width. So how how we'll do this, everyone, is we'll 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 hear the staff reports from the city. And then. We'll have discussions amongst the commission members, then we'll have public comment. And then we'll wrap wrap up whatever makes sense uh to us. Okay, so so Philip, you're you're on.
Okay, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I just want to remind everybody this this item was postponed. At the previous meeting in April, and that's why it's before you again this evening. On April sixteenth. The applicant uh send to housing represented at the last meeting by Mr. Dave Coffey. They withdrew the variance request. Um, I want to explain the variance request again. Of of what was being requested, but I want to start by telling everyone that the variance request was withdrawn on on April sixteenth. After the agenda went out, so your staff report or your staff report that you're seeing in front of you obviously doesn't reflect this information. But the uh, the developer came originally to ask for a variance from the the required paving of the entire alleyway. Which is required by our Public Works Department. It's in code, unfortunately. That alley is only sixteen feet in width. So the developer wanted a variance from paving the entire alleyway. He wanted to do twelve feet instead of the sixteen. That's why the original variance was proposed. So, once we received the application and met with Public Works and discussed the matter. We came to the compromise, basically, um, as staff. To be in favor of paving fifteen feet. Rather than sixteen feet of the alleyway, which would allow for the developer to. Not infringe on private land during the construction process and not even get close to it, basically. Um, that's why the variance stayed alive. The developer did not want to agree to paving the entire alley width. Because of the difficulties that oftentimes um. Brings during the construction phase as far as putting in forms and staying within the right of way, working within the right of way. Um, however, since then, the app the the applicant has withdrawn the request. Resulting in the entire alleyway being required to be paved. At at never, uh, uh, at no point during this variance process was. Um, was not paving the alley going to be a recommendation from staff. At all. So I I want to be clear on that. Um. So the new, so so that's the path forward. Essentially, there is no application to consider this evening. Um, the applicant will still be required to go through the site plan process. In that site plan process, the alleyway design will be proposed. And we do this all over town where alley widths don't allow for the full. Twenty-four feet that are required for a new alleyway, new subdivision. When there's only so much right of way to work in, it's. Required to pave that entire width. You can see that at the Fremont Apartments up on Fifth and Fremont. You can see it behind the Rocky Mountain Car Wash on Third, behind that. Every downtown, that every building in downtown, I mean, the alleyways are around the same width, about sixteen feet. They're all paved. So we do this and and we and this is a, this is not something outside of the realm of possibilities. Um, the reason it came forth as a variance again was because he. The developer was proposing twelve feet instead of the entire width. Um, so the new motion. Uh, that that really is the only motion since the application's been withdrawn. Is for this body to accept the withdrawal of the application by the applicant. Um, glad to answer any questions.
So you want to accept or acknowledge?
Acknowledge, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, commissioners, questions for for Philip and amongst ourselves?
So what is the process if a developer wants to pave an alley? What is the process? Is it something that comes before this group? Are it's dealt with purely by the planning uh unit?
Mr. Chair, through you, um. Mr. O'Toole, so it's the way it works is. City code requires the entire alleyway to be paved in a site plan process. So if the development is permitted by right. Which this proposed development is, that density is appropriate. Um, for R two, then it goes through the site hand process and in the construction notes. It says pave alleyway, which is the entire alleyway. Um, so it happens, I think you're getting to the point of, does it come in front of anybody? No, it doesn't. It's an administrative procedure.
So I'm always. Uh, puzzled and troubled by the phrase an improved alleyway. And so I walk with my dog through my neighborhood in the Corthell uh road area. There is not a single paved alleyway in that neighborhood. I think, you know, that's correct. I don't think there's a single paved alleyway in the Tree District. Is that correct?
Uh, I through you, Mr. Chair, I I can't answer that. I don't have a full assessment of every alleyway.
I think I can. I don't think there are any. And it's part of the charm of this city. That people get to walk on dirt alleyways uh behind their houses. And I would suspect if a developer had a vacant lot and uh. Uh, wanted to put up a development like this uh in the Tree District, that would be holy murder. I think something like this should go through a public process. Because this is part of the character of this city. And that was, that was one of the concerns I shared with Sharon. And uh, in in talking to her, in that uh. Did in a blue collar neighborhood, which is an important part of the history of this town. Uh, it is being imposed upon uh. The the neighbors who have lived in that area for many of them for many, many decades. And there is no review other than by the planning department, which already seems to have a. A strong feeling in favor of a paved alley is a better alley, and I disagree.
Mr. Chair, uh, if I may, I did, there there is. Not a lot of infill opportunities in the areas that you mentioned. Uh, I will say the neighborhoods you mentioned are. Fully built out with not a lot of opportunity for this type of growth. And the zoning, again, I think. R one and and Corthell and then R three in the Tree District, R two in the Tree District. Would permit, and let's take the Tree District for example, but but in R one, it's not, this type of development is not permitted. So there's really no type of development that would trigger a paved alleyway. And I guess it's important to note, the reason for paving an alleyway is for the increased traffic. Right? That for rear-loading garages as well. There's a couple of stars that need to align. In order for an alleyway to be required to be paved. Um. I will bring up the the Fremont Apartments again, which I did go, I did some alleyway research myself. And, you know, that's a perfect example. It's not far from the T Tree District. Most people wouldn't consider it because it's. North of Grand, but really in a lot of ways, it is very similar in that area. And it's paved because there's rear parking, there's garages in the rear of that multifamily complex, which is amidst. Single-family homes. Um, it's, there's increased traffic, so the the paving of the alley is so that. Um, it doesn't degrade faster because, you know, these, you know. It 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 will function a lot better with the increased traffic. So that's why. We require, that's why city code requires it. Um, but I'll I'll leave it at that.
Sure.
Just no, just. Really, I'll keep this brief. So I think what we have here is the classical problem with a neighborhood with a long history. That is undergoing gentrification. And the planning uh planning department is receiving a message, which I think I'm hearing loud and clear. That they would like the character of that neighborhood preserved, and that includes not paving alleyways. And I really think it behooves the planning department to listen to neighborhoods and what they're saying. I think it's an element of respect to that neighborhood, and this is a very vulnerable neighborhood. There's lots of open lots there, uh, there's there are calls for, uh, we must have more housing in Laramie. Uh, the problem is the houses that are going in in Laramie are not affordable to many people, including to my son. Who's been trying to find a house here. He simply can't afford the kind of houses that are going up in Laramie. And I think there's an opportunity, and I'm not saying that this is true in this case with Mr. Coffey and his company. For them to swoop in before this is re-designated as a R one district. And throw up a bunch of housing that do not fit with the historic character of that neighborhood. So a lot is writing on uh the survey that is being done. And on the neighborhood speaking up, and I sincerely hope they do.
Tom?
Well, first of all, I'd like to. Tell the tell the audience that uh. The city of Laramie listens to you. I don't know if you know it, but at this meeting, we have the Assistant City Manager and a member of the City Council. And the rest of the City Council probably has listened to this. So the city of Laramie listens to you and the whole point. Of the survey and the process that we went through to get community involvement. Is that we can hear what you really want and do something about it. You already have somebody with an organization set up. If you want to get together. Uh, petition the City Council for an overlay district or a historic district, that's the way to go about it. Uh, on the other hand. The owner of this property has a legal right to build what he wants there. Like Mr. Sanchez said, he doesn't want anybody telling him how to live. The owner of this property doesn't want a lot of people telling him what to build. So you have two different things going on at once here. And as long as the developer is within the law. He could probably go ahead and build those. Now. The neighborhood may not like it at this point, but what you need to do for the future. Is to organize and go to the City Council and see if you can get that changed. Uh, we. We are more than happy to listen to the public at any one of these meetings. And we really, as Donald says, we really listen to what you have to say. And take it to heart, but we are constrained by the law, and that's that's the problem this commission has. And it's not that we're in bed with developers. We don't even hardly speak to developers. We speak to the planning commission, we speak to the public. That's who we talk to. So I'd like to say that I appreciate and thankful for all your comments and your community involvement. But I think you need to carry it further and organize to do something about your neighborhood. Neighborhoods that organize generally get listened to. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? Um, seeing none, um, I'll open it up to public comment, which is kind of a a a odd thing because we're, as as Philip said. Um. The variance application has been withdrawn. So so there's really no debate, so to speak, about the variance. Uh, whether the alley width is enough or not enough or so forth. That has been taken off the table by by them being agreeing to to do the. The full width of the alley. But if if you want to make a comment, regardless. Again, state your name and 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 address and and keep your comments. Focus on 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 alley things, but realize that it's it's kind of a non-issue.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Caitlin Hargrove and I live at three five eight West Clark Street. I guess. It sounds like the answer is no, and I know that I have to accept that, but is there anything that we can do to not pave this alley? I just. Where I live is already flooding and I hear you say that the city hears us and I appreciate you saying that. But it doesn't feel like the city cares when my house is flooding and my across the street neighbor's house is flooding. She has sand around her house. Because it's flooding, not even at a bad rainstorm. There is no drainage and how this alley is steeped. It's gonna cause more water to go there and it's such a bad area already. And then further. Our sewage lines go into the alley. If anything happens with our sewage lines, we're gonna have to tear up all this pavement that's going in. I just. If there's any way to not pave it, I would appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Any anyone else out there?
Uh, well, hold on. He got up quicker.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I'm John Firestone again. I'm at uh two sixty West Fremont and one sixty-four North Hodgman. Um, I just want to say, um, you know, Pine Street is the original front street of Laramie. Um, from a historic standpoint, that was the original. Would have been uh Main Street or whatever. Uh, they shifted when there was a flood to the other side of the tracks. And so. That's why we have at the pedestrian bridge, we have some of the oldest buildings in town. And so it is really a historic neighborhood. And being that that is pine. And that alleyway is on that original front street, I think there is something to be said of trying to keep it. In line with what the other parts of the historic part of that neighborhood. Um. Yeah, that's really just wanted to say.
Okay.
I agree with that about that.
Uh. Thank you, Mr. Firestone. Uh, next. And again, keep keep it brief and to the point.
Yeah, hi Chandler Hocke. Um, gotta say, I'm not excited to have the same amenities as an apartment building and a car wash. Um. But yeah. My biggest concern just about the actual ability to build this alley, and the reason I think the variance was originally filed is that there are two telephone poles. On the north side, they're not directly apart from each other, but the distance between them. On the north side, they're not directly apart from each other, but the distance between them is fifteen feet and they're offset. So I would like to know how you can pave a sixteen foot alley with these telephone poles there.
I guess, okay, thank you. All right. Mister San Sanchez.
You know, I say if Mister Miller wants to build so much over there, he can build a house. I can't see nothing wrong with a house. But what he wants to build is Brooklyn ever, it's gonna wreck our neighborhood completely. It's gonna devastate it. And he's not thinking about, he's thinking about money. And this guy right here wants him one hundred percent. And I know what he's in it for.
Oh, come on.
But I can't see him not building a house. There's nothing wrong with building a house. I'd like to have that property myself because I'd build a house. That he could live in.
All right, well, I I I think unless you have something to say about about the 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 pavement and and the alley. I think I think I think we've we've heard. A whole lot about whether how the community thinks and and I think it's being processed.
I hope it stops.
Okay.
I do. I'm tired of this.
All right.
We've been fighting it for two years now and it's not over with. But the city council hasn't been involved, so we'll see.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going home.
I'm Karen Bard. I'm the Chair of the Albany County Historic Preservation Board here. Um and I do not live in the west side personally. I just have a question if I may for clarification on process. Um we had one of the members um. Make a recommendation for the west side to get organized. Um and do something about it. I know there's conversations within the west side based on the work that we're doing with them about the potential. For a historic overlay. Um I just want to clarify if I may a question with regards to that process. Um given that this development is moving forward and it's gonna take time to get. Organized to even do a historic overlay. That would not be feasible to stop this particular project. Because once it's approved and goes through city council. And moves forward any historical overlay or any organization or any petition to do anything about that would be a day late and a dollar short. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, come on up.
Hi there, I'm Micah Richardson, city council member from Ward One, um and I appreciate everyone's comments today. Um I have a question about that maybe y'all can help me with. Um when we're talking about paving an alleyway. Would, uh and I'm sorry, this may have been discussed in a previous conversation, but does the alleyway. Get built prior to the um development? Or if the development didn't go through, would the alleyway still need to be paved? Like, are those are those tied together? I guess that's my question.
Good staff, if you.
Yeah, Mister Chair, I'll take the opportunity to answer a couple of questions, but um. To council member Richardson's point, um the alleyway construction happens with the development. If we didn't have a development proposed there, then an alleyway would not be be required. So that the development of this kind, which is permitted in R two, triggers the requirement. For the alleyway to be paved, so it's part of the construction process of the development. As far as uh the construction process itself, yes, I mean, there's. Oftentimes, you know, there's stuff in alleyways that needs to be dealt with and. You know, our our engineering department, I mean, of course, there needs to be enough right of way for travel lanes to go through, right? So if there was something, you know, in an alleyway that had to be moved in order, you know. I I just can't think of anything that would. You know, the the two power poles that were mentioned by the gentleman earlier. Um will be worked around during the construction process. They'll simply be worked around, and that's something that's done regularly. During the construction process, but um. I guess lastly, just uh quickly to to the process of of organizing. A neighborhood to come forth with a zoning amendment or some other type of text amendment, even. Changes to dimensional standards that would change the scope of development. Of what would uh be permitted in west side. Again, that's, anybody can do that. The application's on our website. It's in our office. We are more than happy. To meet with citizens or citizen groups, anybody that wants to discuss the process further. Just give us a call, we'll set up a meeting, we'll run you through the process. We do that kind of stuff all the time.
Thanks, Philip. Okay.
One, one more thing.
Okay, Tom.
Seems to be a big concern about drainage. There is just been published uh on the agenda for the. City uh council, the uh infrastructure uh program for the next few years for. Laramie, there is going to be a combination, they're gonna develop a master plan. For all the storm drainage in the city and it includes the west side. And as part of that process, before city council is a work session tomorrow, I believe. And there will be other work sessions in the future. You can go to city council and express your concern about drainage on the west side. If enough of you do it, it might give bump you up on the priority list, but as Donald mentioned earlier. Laramie's looking at a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty million dollars over the next thirty years to improve that. But the plan has been published and it is going up before city council. And that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow. When's the work session, the twenty fifth?
The work session is this week, but that is not on this work session's agenda, I don't.
Okay. But it has been published and you can find it on the city website.
Good, good point. The stormwater system, yeah, Brian.
Uh Gina Chavez on Zoom wants to make comment again.
Okay, Gina. You're on. You're on mute. There you go.
Gotcha. Okay, um I do have a question about the um alleyway pavement paving. Who will be responsible for potholes or keeping it um, you know. Like it's supposed to be. Who who will be responsible for that? The property owner or the residents?
Philip?
Mister Chair through you, yes, uh this is in city right of way, so it is city maintained. Uh the city would be responsible for keeping that alleyway in working order, so to speak.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Philip. Um, okay, Donald, let's.
It's okay, you're gonna make it through, I guarantee.
Don't beat the horse.
So I guess I would be interested in a short response to this question, and that is. What will give the best protection to the west side in terms of maintaining its historic character? Is it the historic overlay? Because my understanding is the legal protections with the historic overlay are weak. Versus rezoning it to uh an R one? And again, as Tom said, uh as long as it's within the city's regu- planning regulations. Someone could buy a lot and build a McMansion, as long as it meets the city code. So what gives the best protection so the neighborhood is preserved?
Good question. Derek?
This leads to my my hope to stand up here and at least speak one time tonight. Now, I think to to get to your, to get to your answer, uh member of the commission. First, what I would say is the most impactful thing that can be done is to participate in the west side visioning. Make sure your comments are there so that allows us as staff to work through the process. Whether it's zoning, overlays, historic districts. I mean, there's, there's, there are so many things that. Can be done for this neighborhood and others. And and I think what I want to emphasize is that, remember the, the fact that we're even doing any visioning right now. Was a hundred percent city staff initiated. This isn't a, there's no budget for this. This is me making sure that I'm. Coordinating with my staff between projects and day-to-day work that we always have to get done to. Old public meetings, to coordinate with the college, to receive, to get two students to help us effort the process. To write documents, to review documents. Why? Because we knew and we know that this is an important topic. We've heard over the years that the west side is concerned about what's happening. And that's why we're, that's why we're going through that process. And I think if we don't hear all the comments from all the sides and all the opinions. It's really hard for us to try to spend the time that we have, which is limited, right? We don't have infinite amounts of time to try to find, I'm gonna say, really focused. Efforts, whether it's zone changes or dimensional standards or any of those things, to try to make change, right? I mean, we've heard that. I don't think anybody's arguing that we're hearing that, but I I think it's really hard to say right now. What one thing, I think it's probably a combination of things, to be honest. Some, some changes could be more simple than others, but. We're hearing a wide variety of topics, right? And so I know that's not related to the variance, but it does kind of answer that question and and I just, I I just really want to really hammer home. Participate in the process. It helps us immensely to try to really understand because ultimately. We will bring things to city council and try to see what direction and guidance do they feel is important? That they've heard through these processes so we can make change. So I just, I'm gonna leave it at that. I think does that, I think that answers your question somewhat indirectly, not a specific thing, but I I think it's, you know. That's what I think is most important right now, because it is a long process. These things, these things take time.
Right.
And I'll just say, this has never been done for any neighborhood in the city of Laramie. So if you don't think we're listening, I think that's a pretty indication, good indication that we're listening. So.
Thank you, thank you, Derek, and um. If you have a question, come on up and let's wrap it up.
Mark Stansbury, one sixty seven North Cedar, I too am an avid alleyway dog walker. I too am an avid alleyway dog walker, and being an old retired guy, I don't have a lot to do. Except walk my dog and enjoy the neighborhood. What I will say is that we've turned out to a lot of meetings. And I appreciate the efforts of folks that have have talked about historical. We talked about putting together the history, the stories that that we could share to try to make an impact. But what I will say is that after a couple of years of talking, you're still building. And you're still building stuff that we don't want. And there doesn't seem to be a process where we might be heard, but I don't think it's acted on. It doesn't seem to be with what you're throwing up. And I've got an empty lot next door to me, scares me to death, right on the corner, right on the corner of Cedar and and. Fremont, so what's coming in there? And can we hurry and prevent you throwing up three more duplexes in a skinny lot? That they won't even do skinny lots anymore. All our lots are really tiny skinny lots. Which I don't mind, and I enjoy my unpaved alley. And I enjoy walking right past that alley to take my dog over to visit Roy's dogs. But you know what? Thanks for listening, but act on it. May have it make a difference in what you do. I don't think you do. I think you 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 get in league with these people who wanna. Stick stuff in the middle of what we already have.
So we need to keep your comments to the council.
Yeah, okay, come on.
I thought I was.
Okay, I think we get your point.
Thanks for listening.
You bet, we're, that's what we're here for.
But act on it.
All right.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
One more thing, and then I think it's time to, somebody needs to say this. I am the most anti-government person you're ever gonna meet in your life. All right, and I have been all my life. I could tell you without a doubt, the people who work for this city. Are not corrupt. They're not trying to force anything down anybody's throats. They're good, hardworking people who are trying to serve the community the best way they can. And I kind of resent when somebody's character is impugned, so at that, I'd like to call to vacate. Uh variance or.
Or a a a motion to acknowledge that application is withdrawn, is it?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second it.
Okay.
So um. Roll call.
Madam.
Aye.
Kaiser White is absent. O'Toole?
Aye.
Priscillik?
Did we lose Sylvie?
Did we lose Priscillik? Sylvie, are you out there? You uh un- unmute it? Sylvie? Okay, there you go, Sylvie.
Yeah, huh, yay.
Schneider is absent and Moody.
Aye. Aye.
That is three yeses, one no, two absent.
So it passes?
Yeah.
Okay, and and this is just to acknowledge that the that the um uh variance has been, has been uh. The application's been withdrawn, that's all.
Move we adjourn as board of variance.
All those in favor or second?
Board of adjustment.
For to adjourn? Is there a second for adjournment?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjournment, uh adjournment of the board of adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those in uh opposed, nay? All right, board of adjustment is adjourned. Thank you very much. We're done.